This regular board meeting will be recorded and uploaded to our district website. The definitive documentation and decisions of the board, though, are documented in our minute meetings. Any use of an electronic device such as a computer or cellphone is related to the business of the meeting, and we do ask that cellphones be kept silent. The core values that guide the work of the school district are respect, compassion, honesty, responsibility, and relationships. Our district values were confirmed last year as part of our strategic planning process. During meetings, these values are to be respected and should be evident in the decorum of the meeting participants. So, we will call our meeting to order at 5:33. And acknowledge that today's board meeting is being held within the traditional territory of Denezah, the Denezah and Treaty Eight. So, in 2023-24, the Ministry of Education tasked districts with reviewing codes of conduct as there had been some difficulties across the province and some court direction given related to the actions taken by boards of trustees when dealing with trustees who's on what is called now that. It was expected that boards have due process provisions. Our code of conduct was revised to meet best practices and the guidelines that the ministry gave us. Recent, on a recent board chair call, the ministry reviewed their findings from their examination of board codes of conduct. The slides are attached to tonight's agenda package, and I would like to draw your attention to the summary of findings on page two of the ministry's slides. We don't have a formal affirmation process, but do want a yearly strict basis for viewer procedures and processes for trustee work as outlined in Policy 1001, Trustee Roles and Responsibilities Policy, the trustee code of conduct policy, as well as the Bylaw 191-9 related to the organization's authority. The documents that guide our work are provided for both trustee and public reference as part of today's meeting package. In addition to those three board documents that I just mentioned, we've also put on, just to set the stage for the beginning of the year, our presentation and delegation process. Any member of the public is welcome to address us, but there is a process that needs to be followed in terms of preparing some documentation and doing notification two weeks ahead that you want to come and speak. Presentations such as the one we're going to have on Project Heavy Duty don't fall underneath that delegation, but their public process is due. And during public board meetings, we like to have public join us for sure. The, and we like to have them attend our board meetings, but questions from the press and the public is item 19 on our agenda. And the questions and conversations that are asked by either media or our public that attends must reflect, must be relevant to the agenda item that we're, agenda items presented, and also the conversation must reflect board's values. So, that takes us to 2.0 on our agenda. And are there any other additions to our agenda this evening? Can I please get a mover and a seconder? Moved by Bill, seconded by Madeline. No additions following the question then, all in favor? Thank you, you're all in favor. For those that have joined us tonight, we do have two other trustees that will join us at various points throughout the evening, one in person and one later via Zoom. So, we're actually going to start tonight with the presentation of our financial statements. And we have Cory and Angela. And once we've heard those statements, we'll be looking at a motion, for a motion to accept them as presented. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Cory.
Great, everybody can hear me?
Yep.
And I can present my screen here. How's that? Does that, can people see that?
You can move so that you can see what you want.
Okay.
Shift so you can see, don't, don't be afraid. All right, Cory, take it away.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much for having me here tonight and happy to present the audit and just a quick presentation of the financial statements. So, just like to start by thanking, you know, the management team. I think the audit went really well this year with Angela and her team. And yeah, happy to be here and presenting these, the results of our audit and the financial statements. So I'll take us through this. This is a PowerPoint presentation. It's intended to summarize the, the full set of financial statements which you've included. We've also met with the board earlier this week to go through the financial statements in detail so they could ask some questions and to go through the audit results in detail as well. So, really, this is just a presentation to give an overview and allow the board as a whole to approve the financial statements. So I'll take us through that. So this is just an agenda. We'll talk about the auditor's report and then we'll go through some consolidated financial statements and then the highlights and questions. So in terms of auditor's report, so we do anticipate issuing a clean audit report and it's in accordance with the public sector accounting standards. However, there are also some modifications that are required by school districts for the Budget Transparency and Accountability Act. So they are, are prepared in the appropriate standard and the status of the audit. So we're right where we anticipate being. We've performed all of our audit procedures and really, all that's remaining is we can't issue our final auditor's report until the financial statements are approved by you as a board. So this presentation is intended to assist you in, in approving the financial statements in their final form. So in doing that, I'll review the audited financial statements in a PowerPoint presentation. And as I said, these are really taking all the numbers out of those statements and kind of putting them into a format that's a little bit easier to digest. So we start with the statement of financial position. And really what the statement of financial position is showing is it's saying as of June 30th, which is the year end for the school district, we start with the financial assets, but then we move on to the financial liabilities and then the non-financial assets. So starting with the financial assets, these are things that are really going to turn into cash in the future and potentially provide financial resources that could be spent by the district. So those assets are $20.3 million at the end of the year compared to just, just under $17 million in the previous year. And we can see that in current year, it's made up of $14.5 million of cash, $771,000 of accounts receivable due from the province, $395,000 of accounts receivable due from First Nations, and $561,000 of accounts receivable due from other sources. There's also some items or inventories for resale. This is some land of $116,000, which is consistent with the previous year. So really an increase in financial assets, but we'll also see as there has been an increase in financial liabilities as well, which we'll see on the next page. So financial liabilities, so these are items that, you know, could create financial liabilities in the future. And then there's also these deferred capital revenue items which are included as well. And that's the biggest number, so I'll start by just describing what that is. That's funding that's been received by the province for capital projects. And under that Budget Transparency and Accountability Act that I spoke to, the province requires the school district to hold that capital revenue as a liability, and it's only brought into revenue over time as the assets are depreciated. So really, this deferred capital revenue is a liability that won't be paid in cash and just represents funding that's already been received for capital. So other than that, there's accounts receivable, which would include any of your trade payables and payroll liabilities as well. So that's $8.3 million compared to $6.7 million. So that's increased year over year. There's revenue that's yet to be earned and carried forward to the next year when it will be, so $248,000 there. Deferred revenue, $4.7 million. So the school district gets special purpose funding from the ministry. And these revenues are only brought into revenue when the programs have been delivered. So certain of those revenues are going to be carried forward into the future year. So $4.7 million represents special purpose funds that have been received but haven't been brought into revenue as the expenses haven't been incurred by the district as of the end of the year. Other items included here, employee future benefits. So these are some post-retirement benefits that are accrued to individuals within the district and that will be paid out after their retirement. However, liabilities created for those liabilities as, as the services are provided by those employees. And then new last year was this asset retirement obligation liability. And this represents the liability for remediation of any building that might contain asbestos or have kind of end-of-life commitments where the school district will have an outflow of resources or cash to pay for kind of the remediation of those liabilities. So an estimate was made in the previous year to kind of give a value to that obligation that the school district has, not $6.2 million. So as we can see, the financial liabilities are $130,000 and they're in excess of those financial assets. But important again to remember that a number of these won't be settled necessarily by way of cash. Moving down the statement of financial position, so you've got non-financial assets. So this represents those physical assets, so tangible capital assets or supplies that have been paid for in advance and that will be used in future years. So we see the tangible capital assets for the district are $136 million, up from the previous year of $135 million. The prepaid expenses are for services that will be delivered in future years, they're $380,000. And then a small amount of supplies inventory as less was held at the end of the year. So $136.5 million of non-financial assets were held by the district. So that's all of the kind of statement of financial position. So as we move on to the next page, we talk to the statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So the way to read this page is you've got the actual results there in the middle under 2024 represent the operations from July 1st to June 30th, 2024. The 2023 column gives you a comparison to last year. And then on the left, you've got the budget, which was the amended budget that was approved by the board. So really, in developing your budget, you would have anticipated some changes from the previous year. So obviously, moving from that 2023 column to the budget, you would have anticipated an increase of revenue from that $91.7 million in the previous year to $98.1, but what actually came in was that $99.2. So we've seen increases in revenues across all of our school district clients this year as more revenue and funding was provided to, to cover increases in salaries and things that were negotiated under collective agreements. That's also included in that expense line item, which is the next one. So again, looking at last year, started at $92,000, $2 million. Expenses were budgeted to increase to $99.5 million and the actual results were that $98.9 million that you see in the middle. So the expenses came in a little less than budget and the revenues was a little bit over budget. So the surplus that was experienced was $284,000 compared to a budgeted deficiency of $1.3 million. There were some unexpected savings on transportation during the year in that expense slide item and then savings in terms of unfilled staff positions that were budgeted for as well. So, so those kind of the driving factors in terms of driving that surplus versus the expected deficit when the budget was set. The surplus adds to the accumulated surplus. So at the beginning of the year, there was $26.1 million of accumulated surplus in both the capital fund and the operating fund of the school district. And at the end of the year, that surplus was $26.3 million. Moving down to the statement of changes in net debt. So this statement just shows the changes in that, you know, net debt number starts with the surplus and then it shows the investment of, into tangible capital assets that's made by the district and shows just how that kind of net debt's increased year over year. Looking into that tangible capital assets and the increases across the district, so work being done kind of on the building line item showing an increase from $111 million to $113 million. And then furniture and equipment, there's some work in progress on that buildings and, and furniture and equipment line item. So those are assets that haven't been put into service as of the end of the year and which will be put into the buildings and furniture and equipment categories in future years as they're brought into service and start to get amortized. And then the final highlight is just looking at that accumulated surplus balance. So as, as noted, the $26 million is broken down into the capital fund and the operating fund. So the operating fund is just that, it's those funds that are provided to fund the operations of the district, special purpose funds. So those are those, related to those deferred revenues that we saw. So that's funding that's provided mostly from the ministry that's brought in, in alignment with the expenses. So that's why we always see that that fund doesn't have a balance is because the revenue is only brought in when the expenses are spent. And then the capital fund. So this represents kind of all of those funds that have been received and brought into kind of the surplus related to the capital operations of the district. So, so not there, and not there available to fund operations, but already invested into that kind of physical capital of the district. So, from our operational perspective, that has increased from $5.7 million in the previous year to five point, or sorry, $4.7 million in the previous year to $5.2 million at the end of this year. And I know I've spoken quite quickly, but I'm happy to take any questions. I'm going to make you guys all bigger on the screen and ask for any questions that you might have.
I always have to explain other on revenue. That's what the accountant wants to know, what's under other? My guess is that interest in there as well? Under the statement of financial position on their asset?
Yeah, Angela, did you want to take that one? Usually for the districts includes leases, rental, things like that as well, so.
561, 480? I wish I could tell you off the top of my. No, because this is the statement of financial position, so it's the financial assets. So, um.
All the.
Is the counts receivable that?
Oh, the other receivables, those are usually federal monies that aren't included in the provincial receivables.
Sorry, I'm just getting to right now, it's statement one. I know, it's in the notes. I wish I had a soundtrack like From Jeopardy or something to allow me the time.
Is that a statement one?
Yeah, so it's due from the federal government and then the other is the 270, 417, which is. Ask him another question and I'll, I'll get back to you.
So as, I was trying to help you, I'm looking it up in our file as well.
So Cory, when you should audit, there are things that get done every year, but your sampling of process varies. So over time, all areas are looked at? How was your sampling different this year than last year?
Yeah, so, so on an annual basis, the audit definitely focuses on high-risk areas. And our high-risk areas tend to be common because the operations of the school district are common. However, in the current year, we did extend some additional sampling with respect to the payroll process in terms of sampling specific items and running statistical sample of the, of the payroll section of the file. So this included specific item sampling, going straight down to the individual payrolls and, and testing those right back to the collective agreements this year. And then other things we looked at was adding uncertainty into some of the accounts that we would look into. So Angela doesn't know on an annual basis kind of what we, what we plan for and, and that's really to respond to the, to the risk of, of potentially fraud that management could, could post entries that we don't know about. So this year, we did, we looked into kind of other revenue and, and looked for some unusual entries within those accounts and we didn't identify any.
Thank you, I'm sorry I ran out, but we need to go over the throat lessons.
No problem.
First Cory, I mean, with, you know, finance and budgeting, I'm very happy not seeing red marks or negative signs kind of thing.
Yep.
That's always a good thing. And the other thing is something that's dear to me is I always ask about staffing. And first, for a district our size, would you say our finance department is low in numbers, like on par? Or high compared to other ones that are like our size?
Yeah.
Or is that, are we doing good?
No, so that's a, that's a great question. As, as finance staff, just as teachers are, are difficult to find across the province and across the country is not as many people are, are getting their CPAs these days. Definitely throughout the year, you know, that it's, there has been a vacancy and Angela stepped into some of those finance roles to, to fill in. And then now, at the end of the year, I know there was a, there was a hire within the finance department. And so what we generally see for a district this size is, is kind of two designated accountants. And that's what we're seeing at School District 60. And then obviously, you know, there's, there's other finance staff that are within the payroll function or the purchasing function or, or those types of functions. So really, in terms of capacity, it's, it's right where we'd expect. Obviously, filling some of those designated CPA roles are difficult and, and it's nice to see that that's been filled at the end of the year.
And you kind of tied into my next thing I had. We hear a lot about recruiting and retaining teachers, you know, and people in the schools. Okay, we've had our turnaround rate for the past little while with our finance department. Is this a normal thing going on in school districts right now?
Yeah, so I think that's a common variance. Like as, as I noted, you know, most, most school districts are budgeted conservatively because there's a limited source of funding. You, you don't have the ability to, you know, increase your revenue by increasing what you charge on a monthly basis. You don't have that lever. So school districts naturally budget conservatively and budget for a full complement of, of teachers. So what, one thing we've been seeing and, and not uncommon is, is that the teacher salaries are kind of coming in below budget because teachers are difficult to find. So, you know, certain districts, you have principals, you have vice principals, you know, which are already getting paid stepping in to fill some of those roles. Or, you know, some districts are using unqualified teachers which have a lower pay rate and bring kind of that average pay down. So those are all factors that are, that are, that are challenges for the district as, as we're in an environment of, of teacher shortage.
It sounds like you're saying that other districts are also having troubles finding like accounting people also?
Yeah, I think if you would, if you were to go around to the 50 school districts and kind of dig into their financial statements, you'd see very similar, very similar themes, especially, especially as you get out of the main centers. I, you know, I work, I work mostly with districts outside of, you know, your urban centers and, and that's definitely what I'm seeing. So one thing I can't speak to is, you know, whether somebody like the Vancouver School Board is having the same trouble getting teachers.
We can't, we can't control that stuff. But as long, as long as we're on par, have everybody else kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can't control it and it's very difficult to budget for and because you need to assume that you're going to fill all your positions because you don't have the other side. The optionality when you're running businesses, you know, you know, increasing revenue somehow. Your revenues are going to be set based on enrollment and therefore you have to budget prudently based on having a full teacher complement because that's ideally, ideally you want to go and operate with a full teacher complement.
Thank you.
I just want to say that it sounds like there was a lot of respect throughout this audit, both ways, from both way. And I, I do want to say that I appreciate it that as a board member, we got the information early that we could go through it ourselves as well. And I really appreciate that. It gives me a lot more confidence to be able to, to make a motion this evening. And I just wanted to thank the audit team and our team.
Great, thanks.
I'm sorry, just in that other receivable, it is just that other, like, other receivable. So it's from the federal government as well as we do invoice different businesses and people for different programs we have in the districts.
So Cory, your firm does audits for other school districts. Are district processes and practices, are they comparable to others or is there anything else we should be considering?
Yeah, they're, they're very comparable. I mean, the systems is the most, is the first place to start is, you know, the financial softwares that are being used across the districts is common. And then, you know, there's variation, definitely, you know, again, back to the size of the district in terms of what policies and procedures you can put in place. Smaller districts, you know, they definitely have more challenges in terms of implementing kind of segregation of duties and some of those standard controls. But what we see kind of to mitigate some of that is, you know, you know, an adequate discussion around budgeting and, and, and monitoring from, from the board and, and those types of things. So very similar to what we're seeing across the districts. And as part of our audit findings report, we do highlight any internal control deficiencies that we would be required to bring to your attention and we, we haven't highlighted any because we, we didn't detect them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Cory? Well, thank you very much. And with that being said, I'm looking for someone to make the motion that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 financial statements as presented. Moved by Ida, seconded by Bill. Following the question, all in favor? Great. Thank you very much.
Great, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
So, we had excitement going on with Project Heavy Duty in the last part of the school year. And we'd asked some questions about it and it wasn't appropriate at times. What we had left in the school year to have Jeff come and talk to us about it. So he's going to start us off this year.
Yeah, so just, just briefly before Jeff gets started. And he's talking about Project Heavy Duty. And just in looking at the board strategic plan under commitment number one, which reads promote varied and innovative learning experiences and incorporate practical, hands-on, land-based and experiential learning applications into the curriculum. And it's hard to imagine a better fit than Project Heavy Duty, which, and I won't take away any of your thunder here, but very few districts do, number one. And our program is the best in the province. And that's because of the people who are looking after it. So Jeff's going to introduce us.
Remember, I'm standing on the shoulders of giants. I did not create this, I just picked it back up and got it.
Yeah, remember, I'm standing on the shoulders of giants. I did not create this. I just picked it back up and got it going again. Uh before I start though, who did not get a hat? Ah, yes, I did. Green or black? You get a variety this year.
Oh, fuck.
Yep, yeah. And of course, our commemorative twentieth. Did you get a hat?
I did.
You did?
I did.
Okay, we left one for you.
Um when you were here in the spring.
Okay, I just, yeah, all good. I just one of those things.
I did, I do have it.
Wonderful. I just want to make sure no one's being left out, you know? So did David get one? Maybe I think I did leave one behind maybe. So sure, I still have it, so just.
Okay, because I think I have a spare in the board.
Oh, but okay, but is it the twentieth? Well, no, because we have these right there. Yeah, oh. Yeah, speak of the devil. And uh David, did you get a project heavy duty twentieth commemorative hat?
Not.
You did not. Uh green or black?
Black.
Yeah. Yeah, nice.
Thank you.
Very well. Yeah, the danger jacket, so I didn't, I wasn't there for that one. But we did do, of course, we did do commemorative twentieth anniversary shirts. The shirts themselves were donated by Steel Toes and then we paid for the soap screening as well. We had about forty done. So anyways, funny, it's funny, I was watching Together We Learn. I guess there's something in my subconscious because I came up with the twenty years together. There's twentieth event just didn't click, you know, and we couldn't say twenty years because two thousand two was the first one. Right? Uh and we're twenty twenty-four because of COVID and all that. So anyways, twenty years together, that's me and Shells Vanessa Jaco, who was very generous to us this year and a couple of students. So yeah, she's new will uh advance there. So same as last year, uh fortunately, we were at Parkway again, uh awesome community support uh in regards to all the equipment and uh we had a login site again, which was awesome. And uh again, uh great media. Thank you Moose FM and exposure and uh and the papers and the sign. The sign is up and will stay up, of course, on site uh all year until about a month before the next one. Uh give or take, uh I'm hoping, actually, we'll hit that the next slide. So there you go. Nice. Oh, yes, we did a big uh, thank you. Yeah. Uh we had a big thank you in the newspaper and uh yeah, Todd Buck did that for us, which is great. So new to this year, money collected. Uh I locked my office door at Northeast Central School for two days from students and started grant writing. And uh lots of it. And so I found some new links and leads as well. Um so we collected seventy thousand dollars for project heavy duty last year uh in grants and donations. So uh new corporate connections, of course. We have Vanessa Shell, uh Bridget at Petronas. Uh I asked Petronas for a chunk of money. Uh so we'll see. Uh we had great feedback regarding uh our media coverage and of course our gratitude with the uh flags and the stickers. So yeah, feedback. FYI, Jen and I paint every one of these by hand. So just anyways, I gotta do that. You gotta shout out. A couple of things too, uh website. Uh we rewrote it and it's up and running with videos. Thank you to Jared and Sharon and Shell. If you guys don't mind, just clicking that hyperlink there. We don't have to go through the whole thing. But just to kind of give you a little visual there, we really tweaked it up. Jared did a great job on the music because the original Parkway music was a violation of copyright. So he put in some good old YouTube copyright, no problem music there. Yeah, soon he's got a sense of that. So uh yeah, and then, yeah, so then we'll go back to the slide there, Stephen. Perfect. Um BA course, uh we rewrote uh, you know, I rewrote the BA course with some help from Jared. And we can now actually garner fundings from project heavy duty through the key learning center. So that's good. We'll continue on with that. Uh throughout the years, I say about five thousand dollars, uh maybe a little bit more, but that goes right into the project heavy duty budget there. And then, uh of course, Moose FM is very good to us and so I want to show you uh parts of of the interview we did with uh with Doug there at Moose. Uh Stephen, we'll start at forty seconds in and then stop it at three forty. Because Mia was amazing. She's a natural on the radio.
So we couldn't get a student here tonight, but we've got a student test to hold.
Yeah, we did bounce as well and and she was great on bounce. So.
Wait for it around two.
No, it's okay. And my my favorite part overall was actually working with the operators and getting to know them and their personalities and getting to know the machinery. And actually getting to move and work in an actual work site. And because it was, we were actually on a work site. You weren't allowed to go on if you didn't have your safety gear, like if you didn't bring your steel toes. You weren't allowed to go on that day. You were stuck in the office.
Yeah.
And it was genuinely like we were actually on a work site.
Yeah, it sounds like you're an employee.
Yeah, it was an awesome experience because it's almost like you were working for someone. So you got to work like, yeah.
What what kind of machines were you running and except the things were you doing?
Got to run a rock truck, which we were dumping dirt. We were picking it up with excavators. They were filling up our boxes and then we were brought to dump the dirt. And then I also worked on excavators and I filled up rock trucks.
Yeah.
And I did, I worked on a couple of dozers and we were making one big hill, like we were flattening out the dirt and everything that we moved.
Mm hmm.
And there was a second site. It was a forestry site and I got to work on a processor and a buncher and a skinster.
Wow.
Buncher was my favorite because it had a huge blade on the bottom and you just got to cut trees down.
So that's the buncher was just kind of clamping around the tree and it saws it off and that sounds like a blast.
It was so fun.
So you went to basically two different work sites, essentially up in the woods and then you were working on building construction sites probably around.
Yes.
And then uh we were talking before uh, you know, right before we got on the air here. The first day, you said you're all kind of jammed in a trailer and I thought, okay, well, you have class every day. Well, that that's not what it was. You were doing kind of your safety orientation, again, as if it was your first day on a new job site.
It was honestly exactly like a job site, basically, just a bunch of kids and operators instead of fully operators.
Right. Issue, sorry, go ahead.
We all got to work together, like a big thing. I used, what I like to describe it as, we were one big colony of ants.
Yeah.
One after the other, we all had our own job and we followed it perfectly and we don't.
Came up with that on her own, by the way. That's me, I'll be it.
That's amazing. What were you gonna say? Well, I was gonna say this year we tried something new and uh we tried a program called SiteDucks with the students. And they could download an app on their phone. Uh Robert, can't remember his last name, but he has a safety company. He was out every morning to work with the kids on that. He was awesome. So shout out to Robert. Thank you very much for your time. And sure, I donated to him actually, so that was great. And uh we wanted to make it as real and as genuine as possible. And that's a new program that industry is using according to Tyrell. So uh yeah, and you betcha, the more realistic we can make it for the kids, the better experience it is for everyone. That's really incredible. And let's do, just a couple highlights because you can tell it's eleven minutes. I'm not gonna, that's supposed to not yet. Perfect. Uh so students, I guess, going into grade twelve now, kind of kind of in the coming year, they'll have this opportunity if they'd like it again to apply. To apply, yeah, grade eleven or twelve. Yeah, no, eleven, twelve. Uh seven out of the sixteen, I want to say, were grade elevens. And they were heading into, I took them this year and same with last year because they're going into the dual credit program, the grade twelve year, so they may not be able to participate then. And if they're doing their heavy duty mechanic, there's there's no better place to learn how to operate machines and see how they function and work because the students maintain the machines at the end of every day. You know, four thirty, it's fuel up and grease and maintenance time. Wow, I mean, another aspect of this I wouldn't have expected. So you you literally did everything you're supposed to.
Basically.
Amazing.
Honestly, it was almost the best, well, it wasn't almost the best part. One of the best parts was actually getting to to take care of the machines and learning how to grease them and where to put the DEF and finding where everything is that you needed and like the air filters and everything. Because you actually like got a look at how it works and how you would take care of it in an actual job site, which was awesome.
Yeah, cool. So seven fourteen then, Stephen?
Somebody's into her opportunities.
Sorry?
She's definitely into her opportunities.
Jeff, she wants to take minutes to say thanks because this this doesn't happen without a lot of help uh from the community. So this is a real community event. Uh the the way that people come together is just absolutely astronomical. We cannot thank our sponsors enough. Um and people come in uh when we have problems or encounter problems throughout the event, like people step up to the plate, like the Friday of before the event, we lost our medic. And we put the call out and within four hours, uh you know, Trojan was looking for us, AAA was looking for us and AAA managed to come through. Thank you very kindly. Uh Raven Oilfield, the borrowed barbecue trailer that we had, the original one, it cratered on us and so Raven wheeled one over for within ten minutes. So thank you very much, Raven. And thank you to all the community. There's just so many sponsors to list. Our sponsor sign, the logos is up on site. I drove by the other day and it's uh not in a puddle, so I chose well. Where where's the site, by the way? The site is Parkway Southlands across from Auburn there. So you'll see the big sign up there, Project Heavy Duty, and that will stay up all year on the last bypass there. And uh of course, uh we're publishing uh Energetic City is going to help us out with a thank you to sponsors and uh Alaska Highway News is going to throw uh, you know, the list of sponsors and stuff. And so we just can't say thanks enough. Uh this is just an amazing experience for kids and this is something very unique to Fort St. John. Yes, there are other heavy equipment operating programs throughout the province, no doubt. But those are, kids are on the equipment mostly for about uh an hour and a half each. So Mia probably spent, oh yeah, she probably spent eight to ten hours on a dozer alone. Let alone, you know, than the rock truck and, you know, so because we go seven to four thirty, you know, it's a it's a real gonna tell a really neat story. The kids were here uh coming on time and it was Wednesday or Thursday. It was like ten to seven. All the students were there, the operators were milling about, the kids were kind of like, well, we're ready, let's get to work. It was awesome. That was a really neat.
Games on, I gotta get my work done.
Okay, thanks for getting it there. That was one I really wanted you guys to hear because that was, that's a true story, of course. Uh Bailey Helicopters donated rides to celebrate the twentieth. That was a lot of fun. And yeah, you heard the barbecue scramble. Uh the original donated one, comped out and uh that's where Raven came. Looking to next year, Parkway site is not guaranteed. Um I have a promise of intention at this time. There's a good chance. I do believe they want to be involved. It's just gonna be a matter of where they're at. Uh so I will be always keep my ear to the ground for backup sites and and things such for that. Um uh we got that. Uh Access Manufacturing is in the compound, so we'd have to change that up as well and figure out a site um and clear it. But we've done that in the past. I've seen that before. Um uh we're actually doing it over by Canadian Tire. Uh we're kind of right there. Uh also, um can we need to cater to the side dishes? Uh talk to Stephen career staff to continue to cook the steaks um on the SD sixty indigenous barbecue, which I will test out about two weeks before to make sure and have extra propane just in case. Uh I also live, if it's Parkway, I live very close and can rip home. I've got extra tanks. And uh yeah, and then uh yeah, look back up again. So thank you for your continued support. Um we can't do it without the school district and uh and all the help I get, everyone's really great, you know, and and very much behind this endeavor. And uh yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I I have lots of fun with it. It's busy. I'm exhausted by the end of the week because it is, it is a hopper. But apparently too, I am a natural at the grader, apparently. So that's what the guys were saying. It's first time on a grader. So yeah, it's great.
My ex-career.
So no, I no, I couldn't do it. It's uh it's too isolated. I spent two hours on a on a uh excavator uh Sunday before, just practicing and stuff. And after two hours, I was like nothing's on fire. You know, it's great for twenty minutes, right? But yeah, to do that for fourteen hours in a day, no. You can't sit still that long.
Let's see if there's any questions.
Yes, please.
Any question?
Well, except, oh, and then we have to watch out as well for like crazy people that come and uh you know, O- okay, security to through the site, so.
That's a reference to me wandering around.
Of course, want to invite you always to the barbecue and and to the site as well for a tour anytime. You know, so uh you bet, love to show people around and uh, you know, see, it's it's amazing when you're down it. It's just, it's something that is beyond words almost. Mia said it too. She just.
Just see if there's any questions here.
I don't have a question on that, though. As a board member, as long as I have been, we struggled to get this project okayed by the board, but boy, am I ever glad that we did and it's still on as well as it has. And you said it, it is a community that really helps. And I'd like to thank the community and our staff and stuff because it's incredible for the kids. And just like you said, you learned that you would want to do that.
Yep.
So it's an opportunity for them also because some may really like to be isolated and some might not. So it's just great for their careers.
Yeah.
Your energy, uh if it's anywhere near the work site, i- it's contagious. Thank you for what you put in.
That's incredible. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I really don't have a question, but I mean, I've been down to it many times.
Yeah.
And I enjoy it.
Oh, yeah.
It's it's so nice to see is you know that the grade eleven is twelve. And they're really professional about it.
Yes, well, you gotta be.
And then, I mean, we go to meetings down south and with other the other districts. And I brag about this, like.
We got the website now, eh, with the videos, so.
I brought it up and showed it down there and stuff and when they talk, you know, what do you guys have, unique in your district? And this is one of the things I talk about.
Yeah.
And say, you know, like, this is something, this is real life kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's sixteen students. Is that what the number you're um aiming for again this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. That's kind of our magic number because that's about the number of pieces of equipment that we can get generally. So, yeah. To do to to do more, um you'd have kids either sitting around or it gets too crowded. So sixteen seems to be that magic number according to Richard and so I'm continuing on with that. He's been my guide and my mentor. I'm not going to change too much.
This is a program that was ahead of its time and that people are trying to catch up to do this kind of stuff.
Actually, I gotta say, Helen, too, this one was based on Vanderhoef and they're on the, I believe it's Vanderhoef, I want to say.
Yeah.
And they're all in their thirties. So that's what uh we need to continue on. You know, with the barbecue, I said, well, we've done twenty years, let's go do twenty more.
Okay, uh thanks, thanks, Jeff. And um uh as Ida pointed out, to get something like this going is actually once you stop, it was fifty fifty whether it would ever start up again. Covid. For other districts trying to get something like this going would be almost impossible. The the millions of dollars of equipment that is on site and the hundreds of thousand dollars in fuel and an operator fees is is quite something. And you know, Jeff, part of the uh board strategic plan is also to recognize staff that are that are really helping us out and helping out students. So we have a small little gift here for you.
Well, that's very kind. Thank you.
And it's uh Jeff's own uh hat, it's an actual uh safety hat here, helmet. And it's a Jeff Mayer project coordinator, project heavy duty.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Very tiny.
And just to let you know, when I got this made up, uh I went to pay for the bill and the guy says, oh, no, Jeff Mayer, we we support him with project heavy duty and there was no car, no charge.
Oh, wow. Was that you also?
Uh no, it's a sigma uh signs there.
Oh, Bob, the scientist. Yeah, he's great. He's been awesome. Awesome. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, again, open invite. Come on down.
I did.
Well, when it was going though. Actually, can I quickly tell them what uh what I mentioned in our email there? I don't know if you saw it. So Helen said she popped down and I said, oh, uh I wondered who the crazy lady was that the security was asking us about. I told her, I told her just a hog tire, hold her to morning, we'll bury her with the excavator. All right, thanks, Jeff. You betcha. Yep, well, dude. See you guys.
All right, well, that was a celebration and we're going into one of our agenda. Rusty engagement with salvation because we're gonna start with the lady Ida Campbell.
Seems like it's uh been a bit since we've been doing anything. And um but I did end up going to the cross-country um run. And it was really interesting, as Sharon was Steven earlier. I went as a grandmother for one of the grandkids. But I'm sitting there on a bench with the moms and all the moms and dads know each other, even from different schools. And one says to me, well, you must be a grandma. I said, yeah, yeah. But every administrator that walked by stopped and had a conversation with you. Finally, this one lady looks up and she says, why do your kids move so much that you don't? I said, no, no.
Let me tell you.
So it was quite uh interesting. And I've been to um the Bell Donald School a few times and um the new um A O there uh has been welcomed by the kids. And um I also went to one of our former um employees memorial and I would like to say that Helen spoke on behalf of the school district six candidate. Did a very nice job. And I'd like to thank Helen for recognizing Janine and and what she did there. And I am going to provincial council on October twenty fifth. And I've also been at the Taylor School.
Rusty Gillis. All the way from Burnsville, yay. Celebrations and engagement.
Sorry, my, I was trying to unmute. Um well, I went to the CC, you know, like the Canadian School Board Association thing in Toronto in July, the beginning of July. You guys have that report from me. And since school's been back in, I've uh And since school's been back in, I've, uh, helped run a few volleyball practices where needed. And attended the annual welcoming barbecue at the Hudson's Hope School last week, and, uh, that's about it.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Raymond.
I attended the new teacher orientation evening, it was good to see new faces, I got to meet our new addition, Claire View as well. Uh, attended the coronation medal ceremony on behalf of the district, that was good to see too, and then I find out that Helen's dad got that medal as well down south, so. I attended the labor management meeting, uh, the first Claire View pack meeting, it's very, very good start at that school, and did the audit review with the K P, K P M G last week.
Thank you.
I was a day early for the audit review. And sadly couldn't make the next one, the day, they got a little crazy. Had a good chat, chat with, uh, Jaclyn out of one-on-one in Upper Pine, that, our next meeting is at Upper Pine, or sorry, Upper Hopeway. And everything at one-on-one's good, we're looking for a little bit of staffing out there. Um, a huge thank you from Presby too, for the, the district stepping in and helping them with their, uh, reseeding and they now actually have grass, so. They're, they're really excited about that, everything's going along very well, did some work on the driveway. Um, and that was it, I wasn't able to make contact with either of the others.
Thank you. Rusty Snow.
Normally the first week of school, normally we stick away from them just to let them settle in. Unfortunately, I had to be there like the first day, I think, because I was going to be away for a while, and I had to let them know, but I mean, I, so I've had contact with my schools. They were sending me, I've got newsletters from them all this week, and replied back to them all, thanking them, okay, and, yeah. I'm looking forward when they can get back and visit some more.
Go slowly, Mr. Snow. Right, Rusty Woods is not with us. So, I looked back, our last meeting was actually the seventeenth of June, what have I done since the seventeenth of June? Well, there was graduations and so I attended both North Peace Grad and Hudson Hope Grad. On the twenty fifth of June, I attended a Good Neighbors Meeting, which is an O P S site, and there is a report in the package. I spent a lot of time in the summer on work related to the world remote network. I, um, have, we, the world remote network has a report that's going to go to the board of directors on the twenty sixth. And we'll see if they release it or send it back to us for more work, but that took a chunk of the summer. Um, I participated in one board chair call that brought us up to speed on Bill Forty and, uh, codes of conduct, and the codes of conduct stuff was mentioned earlier. At N I B on the fourth and the fifth, um, we'll hear a lot more about the, the bill forty, so we're moving that forward. Um, I was asked to attend the youth advisory committee meeting with the city, and that information is part of your board package as well. Um, labor management meeting, we've had one, Madeline and I were there, and very good tone, happy staff, happy management, really nice feel to the meeting and start to the year. On your behalf, I attended the N P A meeting and I invited and reminded principals that each school has a trustee liaison, if they're not sure who theirs is. We have ways and means of connecting, but I did say that by the end of September, trustees would, would be in touch with the liaison schools and encourage them to connect and make sure that we were on their email chain for newsletters. And I got to do the Terry Fox run at the bench, which was quite exciting, and attend the, did the audit for he as well. So, lots going on. We're at item number five on our agenda and we're going to take a look at pages seven to sixteen in your agenda package. And that is the minutes of the regular board meeting of June the seventeenth. Wait, could I please get, uh, mover and a seconder, moved by David, seconded by Madeline. Are there any errors or omissions? Any none? All in favor? Scared? Business arising? I don't see that much, though. And done, done. Right? Moving on to item number six. Six point oh, approval of excerpts at the regular board meeting of May the twenty first, which is page seventeen in your agenda package. Give a quick read. Get a mover and a seconder, please, moved by Ida, seconded by Bill. Any errors or omissions? Any none, calling the question, all in favor? Right, announcements and reminders. Try to think of everything, but when you look at that, is there anything else that we need to add? What's already starting off to be busy? Which is exciting.
Question on the community of all, that's a gymnasium, gymnasium grand opening, so that is kind of what we're gonna go ahead with.
Yeah. I'm hoping, I might do a reach out to middle school and high school, it would be nice to have a little bit of information on when their home tournaments are, to put on this as well. Um, I usually find out about them by accident, um, but it would be nice if we could put those there as well.
You could reach out and give them a finish, yeah.
Hudson Hope gonna have a home tournament, Nicole? Okay. All right, we'll move on to senior staff reports.
Superintendent's report, uh, number one is the H R report for teachers, and I'll move to the online report, which includes some of the most important as well. First of all, the picture here is from one of our staff members, Jennifer Paley, who runs the, um, dispatch, and so her kids, uh, took a picture of her kids on the Burt Post track, just kind of in recognition of the, uh, collaboration that put that track together, the community uses it a lot in the summer as well as the P E classes from Burt Post. Um, so we're back on track for another school year, twenty-four, twenty-five, which is very exciting. Um, under here, we've got student learning and I've started to align some of the headings with the board strategic plan in terms of, uh, reporting back on it. And of course, the, uh, most significant piece of reporting from an operational perspective is the FESL in terms of all of the initiatives for intellectual, uh, human and social and career development of the students and the, uh, I'll refer to some of the attachments here in a minute. Also, one, again, one of your attachments is along, uh, is the alignment with the board strategic plan, and I'm going to get to that when we get to the other items. Just a reminder to the public that this is now a completed document that has been passed. And in addition to the full strategic plan, which is available on our website, along with the engagement summary, there is also this one pager with all trustees, and I ca- I don't know who do we thank for laminating these, was that you, Helen?
No, wasn't me, I'm not very good at it.
Who did this?
Leah?
No.
I am not a great laminator.
Okay, so whoever did that, thank you, so the intent is to have this out just in terms of adding our work, both from governance and an operational perspective, uh, for the next, uh, for this mandate. Um, but just in, in conjunction with the provincial election, of course, we sent out this information to our teachers and schools, not everybody, of course, takes, takes up the activity, but it is a neat one when the students can practice what it means to engage, and that's, of course, of interest to trustees from a governance perspective of students understanding what that voting process is like. Uh, and I've diarized every year now to give the trustees a bit of a snapshot as of mid-September of where we sit around the teacher staffing. The reason it's not a support staff picture at this point is because that continues to evolve over the month of September, depending on the hours of E A time that's allocated to a school, depending on who they're able to hire and the needs, of course, that come into the school. So that's still in, in evolution over the course of September, however, for teachers, uh, you have some information here, um, that we are at approximately twenty-four L O P, which is an F T E of eighteen point seven, that means not all of them are full-time. Okay, but we have twenty-four bodies as far as being letters of permission, three of those are internationally trained and have applied for the B C teaching certificate. Our current unrolled positions, uh, Buick Creek was actually filled prior to the year starting, but unfortunately that teacher has since left, and so they have contingency plans and it's actually coming together quite well with some local, uh, people. Uh, Dr. Kearney's still looking for one, E L C one, North Peace one, and one-on-one, we also had one as well that, uh, that didn't show. And so there's a good contingency plan there because we had some extra teaching capacity, and so that's okay. Uh, the T T O C list, uh, looks like the seventeenth, already all of them were deployed, so that didn't take very long. Uh, we, we do find more T O Cs coming online because many of them are not willing to start working right away in September, so as the school year's. More of them come online. And as of September seventeenth, we have thirty-five certified and thirty non-certified T T O Cs in our book, on our books. As far as teacher recruitment goes, that is now essentially a twelve-month process in S D sixty. And we've tried to become more strategic in terms of not just attending fairs, but using some of the services out there like Indeed, which have actually borne fruit and helped us be more efficient with our time. Also, our district has become a bit of a lighthouse when it comes to the processes around hiring international teachers. So we've developed processes, we've shared them with the province, and Alex has been able to guide a few candidates home to S D sixty over the last couple of years. For the information of trustees, we are doing much better this year than we have in the last couple of years, at this time last year, we had eight unfilled and holding positions. And so we're still missing some people, but definitely improvement over last year. Uh, in terms of, uh, for our staff as well, the last week of August sees many workshops and many teachers attending them as well as professional development that kicks off this September, including this one here, the Hegarty Program on Words Their Way. And a heads up to the public and trustees that the Erace website uh, has been revamped, and that's information for parents and staff around things like bullying, anti-racism, reporting incidents, and there's a whole wealth of resources there for parents and staff alike. Also a good time, just as Helen started off the meeting with some of those initial protocols and processes that we should be aware of to start the school year, there's this one here in the family and school communication, and it's a good outline of what is a, the most constructive way to approach questions and concerns that obviously do arise in the course of the school year, which is completely normal between parents and the public and the school, so just a reminder for everyone to take a look at that in terms of, uh, a process. Also a reminder to public and trustees that the safe access zones that initially was, uh, um, put into place in the spring of twenty-four is now being reenacted for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and there's some information here and what exactly that means, but essentially is to ensure education is not disrupted on school sites and, uh, that students are not unduly influenced by outside, uh, elements. The leadership group is doing a book study this year, uh, as part of Truth and Reconciliation, uh, by the, um, author Joe Crona, and it's called Wauiwa. And, uh, we've already done chapter one and, uh, Pat Jansen's going to take us through the rest of the book throughout the course of the year, so we're quite excited about that. Um, also, we did preliminary work with the leadership group on, on anti-racism, and this is just a bit of a document where we brainstormed because anti-racism is not about introducing a new program, it's about what are we doing at the classroom level, the school level, the district level, the provincial level in terms of addressing racism, uh, with good strategies and with good resources, and so as a sort of a kickoff, uh, we've listed a number of things, strategies, resources and people that are involved in, uh, you know, instances of anti-racism. I can also let the trustees know that I was on a call with the ministry there last week, and, uh, there is going to be an additional type of framework, they're calling it, in terms of giving further guidance to districts about how to deal with, uh, instances of anti-racism, so stay tuned, and I'll certainly be bringing that forward when it comes. Also with the leadership group, uh, in when we have our August events with the principals and vice principals, we just start to lay out what we know to be some of those big initiatives and blocks for the year. And you can see that the framework is always front and center, because that's our educational plan for student learning, along with starting to look at alignment with the board strategic plan for that. We know that we, our focus on numeracy needs to continue, especially given some of the data that we've seen in the last couple of years. Uh, we continue to work on system-wide assessments, uh, systemic approach to behavior, attendance has emerged as a concern and a question across the system from our principals as well as public. Uh, cultural safety, Bill Forty, cell phone restrictions, and that, uh, visited a few schools on that, and that seems to be going quite well. Recruitment retention and coverage, and of course managing politics and polarization, just, uh, acknowledging that in an election year, our job is to edu- educate kids and to stay out of the fray of some of that politics, and that's something just will be going on in the background. Finally, for trustees, a really neat reportage on some of our immersion students who did an ex- exchange over in France. We had a couple of students go over there and then a couple of French students came here, and it was, we haven't done something like this in a long time, and it was, it was very successful from, from all accounts. I was at Burt Bowles when they were doing their initial, uh, Maker Day, that was in the first couple of days of school, and it was a way to bring together the students, especially the new ones coming into grade seven, so that was great. And finally, a picture of our admin group, unfortunately it was on day two, so we missed, my apologies Angela, we missed some of the opportunities staff on day one. Uh, but we had a fantastic retreat or advance out at Camp Cameron, which had a dual objective of making sure our leadership is aware of all of the things you can do at Camp Cameron, and it's, and it's really been brought up to a good level of functionality over the last few years. And Lorraine brought us out and showed us all the different things that have been going on. That's my online report. Item number two is simply a summary. Item number three, I'm just sharing with you what the ministry sent out to me in June on their, uh, inclusive childcare strategy report. Item number four, Helen, I would ask to be broke out, and that's the education plan, the FESL. And item number five was again an activity with all our leadership of what are we doing that responds to, responds to each of the commitments in the board strategic plan under the goal of learning, under the goal of student learning, so that kind of starts to make sure that alignment is taking place. Number six is simply a summary, and I would need items number seven, eight and nine to be broken out for those types of regular approvals from the board, and that is my report.
Thank you. If you use how someone makes the motion that we accept students' report, moved by David, seconded by Bill.
Apologies for the length.
That's.
That's okay, that's good.
We're about to go through it and we'll start with the HR report, which is page eighteen in your package. Any questions related to the HR report?
Yeah. The number one, the chart, not the.
Yeah, the chart. The fall.
Uh, well, is that an abnormal amount of reports on teachers?
No.
No? Okay.
Those would be carrier orders from June. They're not, they're not from this year yet.
Uh, no, so those would be sort of that were, that were completed. And, and so we have a lot of new teachers and, and teachers getting their five-year evaluations.
Okay.
Then moving on to the online report. First item was the framework for enhancing student learning. Questions, comments? There's two pieces. There's the report, there's the actual framework, and then there's the enhancing student learning report.
And, and, uh, for trustees, yeah, so item four there on the FESL reports, the reason that there's more than one, essentially for trustees and senior staff here, we're looking at the big one, the, the public-facing one that's about forty-four pages. That's what gives you all the detail of the strategies and everything that's going on. The ministry requires us to adapt that in a couple of different ways to send it back to, it's a bit of a compliance piece. But we work off of the larger public-facing document. And that's the document that trustees, uh, sort of kind of dive into, starting in February during the retreat when we're looking at all the data. And then we're revising our goals, so there's nothing new there, but some tweaks around responding to the data.
Board strategic plan. Any questions there?
There are two. You, while you mentioned it later on, there were two reports, is that correct, from the administrative?
Uh, yeah, there was also the alignment of operations with the board strategic plan. Yeah, and, and that was just to kick off some of those, uh, strategies that were already happening in alignment with the commitment specifically laid out in the board strategic plan.
Legal development?
Yep, that's the one I was gonna.
I knew it never happens before. Nope, no, this is, this is nice.
You'll see this every year.
Yeah. It's nice, I, we still go places. I was in November in our meetings and, um, no, no, April, sorry, April, there's other meetings. And trustee from the island told me that they had LPs on their UOC list. And I chuckled.
Really?
Hey, and they were like, why do you have? I started explaining to them. Hey, we were, I mean, this, you know, along with this, but we were, uh, trying to remember how long ago it was now, we were in Vancouver, I think it was. Oh, that had to be six, eight years ago. But, um, there was a table there that we had to explain to them what LP was.
Yeah.
I think they didn't know, even know what it was. So I mean, it's something we've been dealing with for a long time. Right? Very long time, I think. And, you know, our district does a good job of dealing with it. You know, is it a good thing?
Oh.
No, but I mean, what do you do? Hey, I mean, to think about it on the seventeenth of September, hey, if everybody was out to UOC and we had fifty-four LPs that day working. Just on non-certified TOCs and, hey, LPs kind of thing. Which I mean, sounds like a lot, but what do you do, kind of thing? Just try to figure out how to get more people into teaching and, you know. I'm still on the Northern Recruiting Committee and everybody in the north from Meriduc is beating their head against the wall, saying the same thing. What do you do? Hey? Uh, but I mean, no, this, I, I can't ask much because it was, it's laid out really nicely.
You made, you wowed him, Stephen.
Just, just to point out, between people like yourself and Helen and the board in general, your advocacy, by the way, as well as the work of senior staff here in this district, is actually leading the problem in recruitment and retention. So they're looking to SD sixty to partner on all these initiatives that they're trying to put into place.
Okay.
That's your point. Um, you, I, I love how well you're managing the, the, uh, matters, uh, the staff. It's a good job. Well done. Thank you. Um, tough job. Um, now, the, uh, college, are we, are they, is, is it a college?
Yeah.
Are they up and running? Are they doing it full? Are they full this year?
They're, they're not full. On the one hand, we were grateful and asked for them to do it yearly.
Yeah.
And yearly intake.
Yeah.
On the other hand, they just haven't seen enough applications because as you know, it relies on full-time enrollment and attendance as a student to be able to do that.
Yep.
So we're more seeing around ten to fifteen.
So we've got, we can use them all.
There's room.
Yeah.
There's room for, there's not as many applicants as they would like.
So are we doing a good enough job brewing our own out of the high school? That's true.
Yeah, it's funny you say that and, and we can maybe get into this another time between Helen and myself to present what else is happening
Yeah.
around teacher education programs so that all these other people can access them because there's some exciting things going on. Some things are not going to come to fruition, other things have, have made a difference. And, and so there's two or three other initiatives that for those people unable to attend full-time in a post-secondary institution, we're getting more options.
Yeah, okay, ironic. So that's where we need to be.
Sorry to add on with that kind of thing. I've talked to a few students recently that I went into their education degree. Very like this year, last year kind of thing. And I'm very much advising them to find a program in BC. So that when you're done, you're certified in BC, everything's ready to go, kind of thing.
Yep.
Hey, because we used to get a lot, we went to University of Alberta and they would finish and they weren't BC certified.
Yeah. And so. The progress is being made.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Might see a end, end of this problem.
Just a reminder for yourself as trustees, this is a really good thing to have on your desktop so that when you get requests for parents, you can redirect to here. And when you do go down to step number four, the appeal process, the bylaw and the appeal process is there, you can get the forms and paperwork that was taken care of last spring.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
Just stop me, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'll just keep moving.
I'm assuming they will jump in.
Okay, good.
That committee of the whole, in October, we'll take a look at what we think the board's big rocks are so that we can
Yeah.
match them up. That's part of our committee of the whole work.
Just go back to the, the racism. Good job on, on staying on top of this. I'd like to think there isn't a whole lot of problems in our schools. Am I right or wrong?
It's a good question. I think of course that, our racism exists. I think what we've appreciated in, in this, with this board and district is it's more of a holistic approach. So, you know, that and any other issue that arises in the school is dealt with under that fully conductive and instructive way. However, as they say, the ministry is coming up with some further guidance, if you will, on, on anti-racism.
It's exciting that we have kids in France.
Happened to be where I was. I highly recommend chase your exchange students back. It's a lot of fun.
And then, of course, there are the attached items.
So any questions related to the Cameron May annual report? Well, it's nice to see the use and some revenue coming in. That, that aspect was quite nice. The inclusive childcare strategy, the deputy minister's bulletin that goes along with it is way shorter, but, uh, it's, we will be hearing more about it, I'm sure. Any questions of, for Stephen at this point in time? Moving on, we have two FESL reports that we're looking at. We're looking at the forty-four pager that Stephen alluded to. And we are looking at the smaller report that goes to the dis- to the ministry. They are something that we will need a motion on. Any questions and or comments related to the framework for enhancing student learning? Recognizing that it is a document we will revisit throughout the year.
And there's the three documents. There's the main, public one, there's your section A.
A, right.
Which comprises this submission to the ministry.
This is, and sec- the reflecting on, this is the data that the ministry expects from everybody.
Yeah, it's a default, uh, default.
Default.
Yeah.
Those numbers on the graphs are hard to read and I have to blow them up.
And, and just.
Old eyes.
The, the, most of this data you have access to as well.
That's right.
On the board, uh, documents, yeah.
Some of the work I was doing this summer, our participation in FSA is good, which means that we can look at these results, meaning that participation rate varies hugely across. I agree tonight. I don't know if that means that you overwhelm them or they're all deep in thought. I mean, we're looking at, we're on number four. Yeah.
I think questions will emerge as we start dealing with it too, right?
Right. Could I have someone make the motion that the board approved the submission of the FESL plans for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year? Ida, I'm Madeline. Calling the question. All in favor? Right. Alignment of with board strategic plan. There's these lovely little yellow documents on your, on your screen. You will know just that. There's an alignment with our goals. There's nothing we have to pass here.
No, just to.
It's just.
Information.
Information and awareness. Both of them for questions and comments.
I think it's a good document. I appreciate it. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of meet to the, it's not just a dry document, it's actually being, and even just the fact when you realize, oh, there's some questions, how do we do this? So I, I really appreciate this document.
Well, when you face with the question from a governance perspective.
Yeah.
How are you responding to these goals? And this is just the beginning because, you know, there's these, some, some work to do around some of the other goals.
Yeah.
In terms of how are we reporting back to you on the commitments of each of those goals?
Some are of a living thought.
Yeah.
Well, this takes it and makes it a living document. And one of the things that we can do at a committee of the whole meeting is go through this more closely and see even if there's some suggestions and questions we have at this point. It's a starting point for thinking and discussion, which is what I appreciate.
And that came out of the advance.
Yeah.
So I think obviously all the admin has done, so I, again, yeah, it makes it a living. I like it.
And it's, it's about also unpacking the board strategic plan from an operational pers- perspective.
I would like to add, it wasn't just the admins that created this stuff.
Your admin. Your management.
Yes, you are.
I thought you meant admin.
You were at the advance, right?
Well, he wasn't on the picture, he wasn't on the picture. Sorry, no, but I, yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm, I'm aware of that because the office stuff must come from you.
I did too. I'll keep, I'll keep quiet. Let's take a reading future summary report.
Can I have a question on that, Helen?
Yeah, go for it.
Um, and well laid out, I, the, the graph, or not the graph, but the numbers there for the schools with higher needs, lower needs.
Yeah.
Um, I am a little bit surprised to see some of the numbers. Do we ever intend to, um, check into why? Like sometimes I wonder, you see the one that with the highest need, like forty to fifty percent, I'm like, oh. Is that a cultural question? Is that a question of understanding of, do we ever check into why the numbers are what they are?
I think in the work that Nancy Burchill does as the coordinator is ascertaining how much of it is need. And, but part of it is the program itself. Because it's not just a question anymore of, you know, did you not bring your lunch? It's, the program itself is to expand into breakfast programs, into schools that don't currently have a meals program. So it's a balance between, yeah, getting a handle on what's the actual need, but at the same time with the money that we're getting, it's kind of expanded into a full-on bit of a food program. And there would never be enough money to feed everyone every day, but it's, it, it has expanded beyond just need.
I always, I, I mean, it's, it's nobody's fault. I just always find it's tricky because you're right. Right now we have the funding and you start creating habits. And then if this funding is not there, well then, good luck trying to. Push back.
A hundred percent. And it's only a two-year window. Uh, what's been super helpful, and again, which would be a problem if it went away, is the capacity in the staffing to support these at the school level. So schools that don't have, haven't had anything in the past, they're trying some things out for the first time. And in any case, and that's the work that Nancy does.
And that, I was going to say that three-year cycle becomes really hard in terms of creating a need. But at the same time, one of the things is the federal government is still talking about a fully funded national food program. School news program. Built.
So many of the kids I work with through my work are, I set them up with these programs. And there's definitely, definitely a need for it. And either they're not creating anything or they're coming with what looks like would be if I said, here, here's five bucks, go to the candy store.
Yeah.
Hey, that's what they're bringing for the lunch, kind of thing. And so, I mean, this is nice, this, I like this. If we could get this for like the other, like the, I guess, O's, like for any kind of thing, it'd be nice. To see what kind of.
Yeah.
They were getting kind of thing.
Sure, I can sort of try, ask for a bit more of the summary of all the schools for next year.
I mean, even like the older kind of thing.
Okay.
Okay, and I know, for example, I don't think it's part of the meals program, I'm not sure. I think it comes out of their funding, but like the senior all programs at high school.
Yeah.
They get breakfast every morning.
They get breakfast as well as a hamper, and so.
I mean, like I'm saying, they, they have many kids that don't show up, have breakfast. And I mean, if you have no, no food, you have no energy kind of thing.
Yeah, so we, we've not only been supporting those kids, it's expanded and and any child who's hungry pretty much can get fed in our schools.
Is Nancy going to come in sometime this year and give us a talk?
She could if we have the time and you ask for it. Right now, some of these things are just annual reports, but she'd be happy to. Actually, no, she'd probably get mad at me, but yeah, she would.
I think at one time we suggested she come in.
Certainly.
That wouldn't be a bad thing just to.
Yeah.
See what she's doing.
Just for a few minutes. Yeah, I think maybe more towards the spring because this last year was the first year of implementation. And once the year gets started, be happy to do that. Yeah. Thank you.
Moving on to out of district field trips. And some because of the timing.
Yes, sir.
Have already needed to be approved, but we have out of district field trips for Dr. Kearney, had some hope. Not worth peace at this point in time. So could I get a motion that we approve the attached out of district field trips as presented?
What I do want to ask with these.
By Nicole. It's okay, I just need a second or then we can discuss, seconded by Madeline. Now we discuss.
In a couple of minutes says that they're, that they are driving. Coaches such are driving.
Yeah, I know, so for example, his boss.
You're talking about their parents drive their own kids?
No, it was.
So like eight-seater van for the volleyball. I just know our staff can only drive under certain conditions, kind of been briefly. We're checking on that too.
I'm seeing bus, oh, and then you're seeing the senior one.
Eight-seater van, that's while they're away.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, we, we've worked with SPP to ensure that everybody is insured in all scenarios. So the van is rented, the insurance, because it is a school activity, covers it. Same with the vehicles there. Isn't that your question?
I think I'm just trying to find the number one here. I could want more. Oh. Yes, the second one. Senior girls volleyball team, Prince George, the twenty-first, twenty-second.
Yeah, Hudson Hope.
Station vehicles.
Yeah, so as you know, per policy, you can have up to three private vehicles if you're transporting students. So there, and then sometimes they drive their little Lions bus from Hudson Hope as well, so they're following the protocols. Yeah. Well, thanks for the question.
Any other comments?
Nicole? What was that about, three personal vehicles?
In board policy, there's all, there's a limit on the number of personal vehicles that should be being used to transport.
And it's more to do, Nicole, if you're transporting other students, it's not, not to do anything to do with an individual parent taking their child to something. So it's a different thing.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, there is no further discussion on that, calling the question, all in favor? In your package, you have posts of responsibility document. Could I please have someone make the motion that the board of education approved the attached posts of responsibility as presented? Moved by David, seconded by Bill. Right, discussion, questions? When FTE is down here, Stephen?
Yeah.
Does that person have their, the one point O, that describes what they're working for the district, not what they're working in the post of responsibility?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the point fives are sometimes they're split position and that's just to do financially.
Then that's fine, what's D cap? At Dr. Kearney, it's an acronym and I went, I don't know what that one is.
I think that's their activities person. I believe it's.
Sorry.
I just. AP the, it's Dr. Kearney.
Not advanced.
Activities.
No.
Okay, that's fine, I just, I went.
I don't know that acronym.
There's a point of information and we'll get that back to you.
Any other comments, questions related to this? If there's none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Moving on to board approval of community coaches. Please have someone make the motion that the board of education approved the attached community coaches as presented. Moved by Madeline, seconded by Nicole. Discussion. Question.
She's got his name on there.
Are you looking for Nicole's name?
Yeah.
But he's bugging you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm not officially the coach, I just help when I can.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, calling the question, then all in favor? Carried. All right, now we're going to put Angela on the hot seat. Move on to secretary treasurer's report that starts on. Page twenty in your pack.
My report contains the finance update to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to give a staffing update to the recently hired positions. Various areas, and then the HR support staff summary report from June fourteenth to September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And that is your part.
Great. Can I have a motion to accept Angela's report? By David. Seconded by Bill. Go through the areas of the report, we'll start with the finance update to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so the, we, we have the numbers from the preliminary budget in there. You can see some areas. The operations generally slow down in the summer, so the funding from the ministry decreases because they're not funding support staff, teachers. So we get less money, so you see that percentage of the budget received is six percent. That's, that's fine, because we're going to start, I think September is even lower, then we start seeing the funding roll in in October. Yeah, we just have very, very little to report through the months of July, August. That's when our facilities departments and. The board office are still here working, so we're, we're down quite a few people, so it's. Nice, actually, good.
Remind me, when do we start to see the LEA revenue roll in?
The LEA revenue gets invoiced in, in December and then in June. We still have outstanding revenue from. From the prior year, but that's due to the timing of the funding, so it looks like it's, it's outstanding at the end of the year. Yeah, statements, so, yes.
You got Alberta student system?
Yeah. I don't know. We might have had some outgoing now, that's very true.
And offshore tuition is our international program.
And you wouldn't see any in the summer, just because we have to recognize the revenue as we start the school year. So we'll see it, you'll see it starting in September.
Who do I ask? I have a question about the third position or third grouping, the management slash professional opportunities. When it comes to our job opportunities kind of thing.
One more time?
Yes, when our job, our job opportunities, it's teachers, support staff, and then there's a third category.
Other professionals?
Yeah.
The other professionals is basically exempt, so that's.
Does that fall under you or?
That's my.
All of us.
Okay, yeah, there's a position here, indigenous culture coordinator? Just wondering whose that was.
It's a new position. And it's an exempt position. So that would fall under other.
Any other questions related to the finance update? Right, looking forward to some staff updates.
Good too, so when we left in June, we're. We were down on accounting manager. And as of April sixth, we hired Adam Reed. He has been here a month and a half, so he's. Hit the ground running, keeping him, keeping him busy and lots of questions, lots of. Responses, but I think his start of the school year has been very. Busy for, so, and then we had, today is the first day of our, we, we did away with the plant superintendent position and we created a new director of facilities position and his first day was today. So as of right now. We're fully staffed.
Is there a difference in those two positions?
Yeah, I'm curious, what, what is inherited director of facilities position that wasn't in our plant manager?
Right, so the, the director of facilities position is more of a, the plant superintendent was more of a hands-on. Just really. In the facility. At the site, this is more of, he'll, he'll be doing a bit of that too, but he'll also have a responsibility to the district, the board. Look to provide. Planning packages to provide, you know, look at the strategic plan and develop strategic goals within his department. I can see Steven has these, but it's definitely. Just more planning, more information, more district goal alignment, I guess, is, is what this position's expectations are for me, so.
Some of that bureaucracy related to like new projects, the bid sites, the supporting the capital plan, the AFG and the more, you know, taking on these things. Because a lot of that has fallen onto Angela's place.
I don't know how I'm going to let it go, but I'm going to.
But they get out of the weeds.
Yeah, it's more of a balance between the supervision of the operational elements of facilities. But also what we really need is some of more of those professional skills and pieces that Angela's had to provide on her own up to now.
Sorry, and I may have missed, but who, who, who is this, who's filling this position?
His name is, his name is Ili Morocco, I'm probably going to say it wrong, I said it wrong, but. Marika, thank you, Ilya. Yeah, he's very well versed in public. Public practices around procurement, around procure, getting funding from the different. He hasn't worked in a school district before, but he's worked in many public organizations where he's had to. Advocate for funding and so I'm looking forward to it. He, his, I believe he has three, he holds three journeyman certifications and he's a mechanical engineer as well.
Was it hard to find someone? Or did you get lots of applicants?
We did get lots of applicants. I think we, we had several applicants for the position and we interviewed several, so it was actually a good process, I think, so.
Is he still in his office, it will be down.
He is down in the front, yeah, that's where we put him. Once he knows the ropes, he can figure out where best suits him, but I think if you're not in the action, then you're.
I agree.
So, yeah.
And Adam, what is his accounting designation?
He has CPA.
He's a CBS. Well, we heard that we should have two with accounting designation.
Yes, I think he thinks I have one, but just with my pure skill, I. I think I misled him. I, I have to say the audit went very well. And I have. I have. Feel positive of both.
HR summary.
Yeah, like, like Steven was saying earlier, the QB hours and allocations really go on till the end of September, so we'll have some. I guess it's just an ongoing process, you can see that we've had. Lots of new assignments, changes to existing, and we do have, we do tend to have more resignations in September after this. So that's not too surprising for us and then, yeah.
Can I ask about something that's not in the report that I expected to see there? Some mention of Dr. Kearney.
I, we, we did get the news release for Dr. Kearney. Outside of the news release at this point, I have not, I don't know anything further. So I was hoping to bring that forward when I had.
More information.
The amounts, the exact strategy, but as for now, I, I did share the, that, but if you have any questions, I. I can say, yes, we're going to.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
We have a two-hundred feet addition to Dr. Kearney that's been approved via press release with no other information available to Angela at this point. I think is what I just heard.
I was, yes, it was actually quite surprising when we got it and then we had to move quickly so that. To share with trustees because the general, the public had already found out about it before, even myself, Stephen heard about it and I was like, hey. So it's very, it's very good news, so.
It's good news now.
In terms, sorry, of just of the public meeting is that this is something the board had on its capital plan. It's something you've been advocating for, that part's not the surprise. It's just that we would normally, the secretary treasurer would get a bit more information upfront when these things are approved. And she will bring that to the board when she receives them.
Well, I've normally, on some of the other projects, I've been CC'd with a, a letter as the chair to say this amount of money is coming into your district for this and.
It's just a bit. Pretty sure the election, they're writ and that has nothing to do with it, sorry, Nicole.
Well, I was just, I was just going to ask, have you ever seen an offer like this get pulled if this government's not the government come November? Do you know what I mean?
Well, if we weren't the only school district, so they would have a lot of explaining to do when the list was as long as. I will say we were one of the few in the north though that, that received it, so.
Angela, if you, if you don't mind, can I also clarify that this is an actual addition that has been approved, not a collection of portals?
Yes.
So it's, it's, it's an attachment to Dr. Kearney's school now, details to come, but these are not portals.
One of the things. And I don't even know of any things, but I know things from, there have previously in the fall. previously in the fall, been decisions, especially around the modulars, based on slippage funding that basically was unused funding at the end of the year from the Ministry of Education. And what they don't want to do when they go to treasury is hand the money back. So they take a look and they come up with projects to use the slippage funds. And that's where we, we slid in there um is probably money, money that. But normally, there's a little bit different communication process. We'll take it.
Yeah.
Ida.
Exactly what you just said, Helen, and I've seen this before, even in this district. A Skenton, a shelf ready, something that we've had announced because they're using the slippage money rather than turning it back. And, and I've never seen one not go through.
It does feel good to have one of our items on our five-year plan.
Exactly. Because that's what they do.
Thank you.
You're off the hot seat now. All in favor of accepting Angela's report, because I didn't have. Right, I'm just checking, because Thomas was going to join us by Zoom, and that wasn't Jim.
Okay.
Alright, moving on to item number nine on our agenda. Policy committee nine point one. We're looking at the discipline policy two thousand and ten. It has been out for notice of motion after trustee Scott Moncrief moved it. There is no public feedback on it. So I'm looking for a seconder for that motion and I will call the question. Unless there's further discussion related, so can I have a seconder, please? Seconded by Bill. Questions, discussions? We did do this in the spring. We'll have to change now. If we pass it, it will be updated. Because it was last whipped out in twenty fourteen.
Deletion of policy twenty ten.
And again, the reason for deleting it is it's more procedural and operational than policy. Right? No questions, no comments. Calling the question in, all in favor? Right, that policy is deleted. Looking at policy four thousand and thirty-one, teacher sick leave credit, uh with some wordsmithing in there. And some additions, and again, there was no public comment on this. Trustee Lehman moved it. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by Bill. And so calling the question now, that the Board of Education adopt policy four thousand and thirty-one, all in favor? That's carried. Looking now at policy four thousand and thirty-three. Teachers' teaching on call, TTOC and non-certified remuneration. Oh, my memory's coming back. Again, we didn't have anything that dealt with non-certified TTOCs. So trustee Campbell moved it initially. Can I have a seconder? To the motion that the Board of Education adopt teachers' teaching on call, non-certified. We'll go with David. Calling the question, all in favor? Carried. We're at item number seventeen, sixteen on our agenda, PRNT update.
Ten, ten.
Ten, oh, I skipped a whole page, sorry.
I like when you try to see.
Why did I get to there? Yes, alright, I skipped a whole page. I'm looking at the time. Alright, ten point one, BCSDA trustee Campbell.
Uh yes, oh, I have for the BCSDA is a provincial council on October twenty fifth and twenty sixth. And um for the motions to go to the AGM, the deadlines are February twelfth for extraordinary and February twenty first for substantial motions.
So uh this is me next. I did send you the information out for NIB, which is October fourth and fifth. And the fourth will be business meeting and some professional development with the fifth being the leadership series offered by the BCSDA and ministry. I, please get a hold of Leah if you're intending to go. She needs those numbers. And Leah sent you something today that trustee academy registration is now open. So she needs to know what you would like to do with regards to that. So please get in touch with her. And the next two pieces under BCSDA relate to no, we're gonna do CSBA first, Nicole's report. Jumped again. Nicole, you're up.
Well, I submitted a report so that we wouldn't have to hear me rattle on and on. So I'm assuming everybody has read the report, and if you have any questions, here I am.
It was a good report, Nicole.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I did it, I forgot, I didn't submit it till just like two weeks ago, but I did it as soon as I got home, because I thought, oh, I'm gonna forget everything. So I felt it was pretty, it was pretty good to go to, but I had heard from other people, and I would say it's accurate, that it is very similar to, to academy or to the AGM. So you know, depending on price and location, like I can't imagine if a board was to send every trustee to every one of them. Like, I'm not, I'm not sure there's the value in that. Um but it, it, it was, it was good for, to go to once.
But it was interesting to read your report and then see that artificial intelligence is a highlight of academy, so.
Yeah, well, I think, eh, but, and, and we've seen that at the AGM too. And there's some speakers who speak about AI terribly, and then there's some really good speakers. So um I'm hoping BCSDA has system, well, I guess this is public, but the last couple of BCSDA events, I haven't found the speakers all that um great. But there was some really good speakers at this CSBA, so um because if you can't even talk to a crowd about something and get them interested in it, it's hard to it was always hard for me to understand what, what is AI and why do I care and do I use it? And then I realized, oh, I, I do use it, so. Anyways.
Hey. Calling for a student panel. If you're coming to NIB AGM, you can put that on, on what you want to see at uh our winter meeting.
Yeah, I won't, um, I won't be attending the NIB. I'm still here in Burns Lake that day on call.
I'll, I'll keep it in mind.
Yeah. It's also, it's something we can talk about at a committee of the whole meeting, but like if we can't do it, like um when we go to the schools for our committee of the whole uh frameworks, incorporating students somehow into those meetings is another idea, right?
Well, one, you've brought me back to one of my really exciting summer experiences. And that was explaining to Revenue Canada what a trustee does. Because how could I have a T four and not be an employee? There's a half an hour of my life I won't get back.
You know.
Are you serious?
But you know what? It's not an easy question, like what, what is a school trustee and what do we do? Like um my own da, my own daughters, I'm not sure would be able to answer it that well, and I can't succinctly say it very well either. So, yeah, I, I think we actually all might kind of be embarrassed by some of the students' answers to that question.
My grandchildren would tell you that trustees go to meetings.
Yeah, exactly.
Good answer.
So thank you very much.
When I talk to like, wherever you can, or somebody which I've had do before voted, it's, I just kind of say that I'm an elected official.
Oh, that didn't do it. It was hilarious now.
Oh my god, are you serious? Oh my, here's a dictionary.
Right, provincial election advocacy, and I recognize that as a board, we have not, we're not a really political board. But I spent a lot of time with the Rural and Remote Network on gathering what were rural and remote issues. And the letter that was produced on behalf of Rural and Remote wasn't done with the idea of being prescriptive and either having a board use or what use or mandate. It was to give people a starting point to have further discussion with public, with media on what were the pressing issues. So the Rural and Remote Letter is one that we hope brings awareness to what our issues are. And one of the things in the work that I'm doing, I'm recognizing that our northern rural and remote issues are different than southern rural and remote issues. So there, you know, would be the concept of, of customizing. But if you were to take a look at this letter, and it gives you a lot of different points of discussion. If somebody asked you, well, what is it your school district needs? Is there anything that you're seeing missing from this letter that are burning issues?
I, I don't see anything missing, but at one point, I'm thinking almost like rebranding, but if you have an issue like recruitment and retention, I mean, I know that's what it is. But if you have that year after year after year after, nobody's gonna listen to it. Like that, it's almost like you have to rebrand it. It's still the same problem, but you have to rebrand it.
And the process is, has the same weight as the other, and it's not the same way. It's, it's a much, much heavier rock that needs to be, and solved. Because we don't solve it, we, we're, we're really gonna be in trouble.
We know that it's caused all sectors, really.
Now it's become across all sectors, and it's not confined to rural and remote.
Right now, I don't care. I, I want, I want teachers in the classroom.
Yep. Anyway, I guess that's not that's missing, I just, and I read.
It needs to have a bigger, bigger emphasis.
Well, no, it's just that.
I know, I like your idea of rebranding though.
You read it so many times and I, you take that after a while, like.
I did exactly the same thing you just said. I went, oh yeah, okay, then, and then into the other ones.
What do you think the ministry threw in?
Well. I think there will be opportunity, yeah, it's just like sometimes our goals and objectives, to get more specific around, for example, accessible teacher education programs. Or a tertiary program that's managed by the Northern Development Council. Or, you know, so I think, I think it's also about educating some of the politicians around, and by the way, here are some possibilities to support.
And I mean, when you look at the changes in the northern interior branch, we have a new electoral area in the middle of Prince George. Not a lot of the other boundaries changed, but part of this was if you have the conversation and all candidates are aware of what the needs are. No matter who's elected, you've raised the understanding of what is an issue for education, recognizing we're competing against health, we're doing this. One of the other um people that I, is on the Rural and Remote Committee that I don't even have to use this information as a letter related to the election, it's a really good starting point for discussion with other local government bodies as well. So I didn't bring them to you with the idea that I'm saying we have to use them. I'm, and then the other, the second one was um the one that the ECST put together for the full province, but the first is the rural and remote. We can discuss further at committee of the whole, if anybody, because we're still going to be in that election, maybe they're then. These letters are attached for your pleasure. BCPC, Ic J Lehman.
Now, really, I do try to forward the information, I guess that can be distributed to the whole board. Um I did sign up for the symposium coming, coming over. It is bargaining, so I figured I will attend.
Now, symposium in the past, when it's been more, more professional development, has been something that more than the BCPC rep has been able to attend. But if it's bargaining and we know we have very few that aren't in conflict, then probably is a smaller group going to symposium.
It, it's a bit unfortunate. I find the BCPC often puts out the call to register without an agenda, so it's sometimes a little bit hard to decide. I just figured, oh, I'm the rep, so I'm going, so.
You can be sure it would be about bargaining.
Yes, I, because I can't attend all of the.
Well, yeah, just seeing as Helen said, that would be.
Well, and then the last bulletin that you forwarded on the BCPC is they really are talking about conflict of interest, so it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that, if there's any changes to legislation or whatever. So Board Pro D Committee. Again, we'll talk about this at committee of the whole. Nicole has put artificial intelligence on there as something that we want to look at. The other thing that I, we'll ask you to think about for right now and have a comment on. Stephen shared that leadership book with us, and we could as a group look at doing a book study coming back to committee of the whole if there's some interest. Um you've all got the book, and it, it fits with what we're doing. Um we all put a lot of energy last year into strategic planning. That was our professional development. We have us really looked at what we want to go deep into for this year, so. Right. Minister Singh's letter was just attached for your information. Uh the next two letters came as correspondence, and I attached them for your inter, information. You can see that Matee Nation is asking for some recognition that um doesn't necessarily fit with the distinction-based approach that um other indigenous groups are asking for, so there's a bit of a push-pull there. Not our issue to solve, we'll just get to navigate the outcome. Moving on to item number twelve, unfinished business.
Sorry, Helen, you, you, just, just for information.
Just for information.
Fees of the.
Oh, I attached the beef, BC, peas as well. Thank you, because it's missing from here. Okay. I'm moving off of two pieces of paper. Alright, now. It's there, I just checked, not too dense. Um I'm, our schedule of board meetings. We did, needed to do a revision because some of the schools that we had scheduled for committee of the whole needed to change, and because it's a public document. Um we need to look at passing it again. So could I please have somebody make the motion with the Board of Education, adopt the revised twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five schedule of board meetings? Moved by Ida, seconded by David. All in favor? Thank you.
Which one did you change, remember?
You're testing me.
Are those the highlighted in yellow?
There's two highlights.
Okay.
Highlight them, Leah?
Yeah, it's highlighted.
Upper pine in northeast.
I was just making sure it wasn't changed, so that we were going to, like, Upper Pine in, like, January or something.
No, I, I think I sort of kept to the.
Or, or.
Yeah, I mean, oh, sorry, that's not very far, but right, here it's.
Two minutes.
Okay. Alright, Northeast Roundtable Report is there. Do you in relationship to Cameron Lake? I think until Moberly says that it's a priority, we probably won't hear, because it is a complex issue to be resolved, because of overlapping interests. So, that is the best information, and Northeast Roundtable was due to meet again. But they scheduled it for interregnum period, and they can't hold any kind of meeting during that period, so the next meeting will actually be in December. New business, I attached the youth advisory report for you. I do need to look at, um, whether this is something that we want to be part of. It came up, and I didn't have the opportunity to bring it to you, to say, do you want a trustee, do we want board participation in this committee, so I went to the, the meeting with the idea that I would represent us and then bring it back to you. Was another place where I spent some time explaining the role of the trustee and what a corporate board is, so, uh, having looked at the reported, is there an appetite for us to continue to be involved? I have no idea how many meetings it will end up being through the course of the year. It was a bit of a government-to-government reach out, um, so. Thoughts? Besides mine.
I don't even know how to approach this, is it, did you meet the other members on the, on the board?
Yep.
Is it a group you?
It's, it's a group we can work with, I believe there was Urban Matters had representation there. The College had representation there, there's two counselors, Jim LaQueer and Sarah McDougall that will be sitting on this committee, and then there's support staff from the city.
I think it's a very good idea to be part of this, like, this is, this is our wheelhouse.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion.
Okay, so David has made a motion that we be part of the youth advisory committee, do we have a second or for that motion, seconded by Bill? There isn't anything to say if we move forward with this, that it has to be me, I just went in, in the first one.
Well, if it is you, I would, I mean, you need help, I would love to step in and help you with it.
Alright. Calling the question then, all in favor? So I added a motion in now, and Leah, did you get it? Right. Moving on to the minor capital plan. Angela.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about, do you want a motion first, or you want to talk about it before the motion?
How about we speak to it before the motion?
Okay.
So, um, we've asked for six buses, um, this all strictly comes from our transportation supervisor, she's the, holds the key, you can see the number one uh, priority is at three hundred and ninety-four thousand kilometers, so we're getting good, good use of our.
Time.
Yeah, good use of our buses, um. And this is, this is what we spoke to with the planning, so next year I'll have everything all organized, and I can just pluck the projects out and put them in here, because this was a bit of, it was, I have to give a shout out to Radu, he was extremely helpful in, in creating this, so, um, we are trying to do an HVAC every year. So, the priority for the twenty-five, twenty-six year is going to, we're asking for Dunkin' Cran. Um, we have put a playground on here, we're not sure if we will get it, but we, we never know unless we ask, so, um, Clearview is the one that we're putting in for replacements. Then you can see, it's not a typo, the Dunkin' Cran is in there again, um, so it's under the carbon neutral above for three hundred thousand. And then I put it below, um, under the SEP as well, so that, and you can see the explanation is if I get it under the carbon neutral, then I'd reduce, and then I'd likely be able to get all those projects in for next year. So, um, the goal, so Dunkin' Cran HVAC roofing, we haven't done a roof in several years. Upper halfway roofing, and then that school will be completely refurbished, uh, wrapped, um, which is could be up at carbon neutral as well, but strategically, we put it under, um, SEP, because I think they only fund a couple of projects out of each, so, and then roofing again for a, um, a whole central.
Can you just go through what those acronyms are, I know that they're different accounts, and I know the carbon neutral capture program.
SEP, so the carbon neutral. And I say it so much that I don't know.
Well, I know what's in, I know exactly where to go back and find it if I need to, but it's just important to remind us of those different financial categories that we can ask the money from, those school enhancement projects.
Thank you, school enhancement project, thank you, Madeline. Four thirty, I would have answered it correctly. Thank you. So, the goal is that they will approve, um, all these projects, um, they will not approve six buses, but likely, um, we could get three. And we put the six down, because we, if you notice the category rank at the side, those are our three priorities, that doesn't mean those are going to be theirs, they have a different, um, process to go through and analyze, so.
Remind me, what is the number of years they consider a bus should hang in and the mileage?
I think it should be. It's based more on, yeah, it's based more on mileage, and I don't think they have a set number, they definitely will, that three hundred and ninety-four, when I was speaking to the ministry, he almost gasped, well, he did gasp, but, um, I think around the three hundred thousand kilometer mark is, is what I've heard, but again, it also, like, when we submit these, we also submit their, uh, their, their maintenance reports. And when they start to get expensive, that's when they want us to, so if it's a perfectly, a three hundred thousand dollars in rural roads is a lot different than three hundred thousand kilometers, what did I say, dollars?
Dollars, it's okay, we knew, we knew what I meant.
It's not boring, boring the afternoon anymore.
Gravel and pavement.
Gravel and pavement, so they look at all the, and then there's pictures, they, sometimes they ask for pictures, so we, we provide them with that. And I, I there is one additional item that they've asked for, we don't require a separate motion for it, I know that I had Leah um, put it in there separately, but you can see the food infrastructure program is also, um, it will be submitted, it's, it's for the twenty-five, twenty-six, we're asking for, um, Robert Ogilvy to get a new, um, kitchen set up there, because they are feeding a lot of kids, and the current, um, system is not working well for it, so I put in a hundred thousand, which is the maximum we can ask for, and, um, hopefully, we will get that, so we can provide that school with an updated, uh, infrastructure need that it's, would definitely facilitate the serving of the stu, uh, feeding of the kids, so. So for those both, I only do need the one, I only need one motion, so. And that is my capital plan for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education through the minor capital plan for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, inclusive of the school food infrastructure program? Moved by David, seconded by Madeline. You okay on that, Leah, I changed the routing a bit? Alright. Calling the question then, all in favor?
Thank you.
We didn't get to that last page, now, I did talk to Donna Bohner, I thought she was going to be here tonight, they're considering rotating it through the PRNT executive. So hopefully, we'll see somebody at our next meeting. We don't have anybody here from QP, we don't have anybody here from the District Parent Advisory Council, now we get to number nineteen, which I tried to jot you quite a while ago. Questions from the press and public related to agenda items. Are there any questions?
Are we allowed to take this booklet home with us?
That is your package.
About the clips, do you?
We're gonna need the clips.
Not the clips. I'll give them a clip.
Okay.
You can have a clip, of course. Are there any questions? Recognizing that that was a really dense package with a lot of information in it, so if you go away and have questions, feel free to either reach out to myself or the wonderful superintendent who's always happy to answer questions. Happy to see you with us tonight.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Moose, I recognize him, Moose and.
Broken typewriter.
Yes, I knew I recognized you, but I couldn't remember where.
Yeah, no, that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
It's the small one in the corner.
Alright. So, can I please have a motion to suspend our regular meeting, moved by Bill, seconded by Ida, calling the question, all in favor? Right, Leah, please stop the recording. And can I please have a motion that our in-camera motions be brought forward for meditation, moved by David, seconded by Bill, all in favor? And adjournment, mover and seconder, Bill, David, all in favor? Leah, please stop the recordings.